Hold order the meeting in the Greenwood Common Council on Monday, November the 3rd. If you would please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance. After the pledge, please remain standing. We'll be led in prayer by Pastor Zach Stotow of Grace Point Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Shout, pray. Lord, we come here tonight, we are indeed thankful for who you are and what you've done for us. We thank you for sending your son, came to this earth, became a man without ceasing to be God, went to an overgained cross and shed his blood for our sin, and rose again the third day. We're thankful for that plan of salvation for anyone that would place faith and trust in you, that they can have eternal life. We pray that you would bless this meeting. Lord, I pray that you'd be of this council. Lord, give them wisdom, give them guidance, give them discernment as they leave this community. Lord, watch over their families. And Lord, it's a tough job, and so, Lord, we're thankful that they have stood up and answered the call to government. Lord, we thank you for the freedom that we have in this country. We thank you for those that died defending that freedom. Lord, we're thankful for our founding fathers who set this nation up the way that it is. Lord, we know that was a gift from you. So, Lord, again, we thank you for all the blessings that we have. Guide this council, guide this meeting, and may you continue to bless this community and bless the United States of America in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, may be seated. Roll call.
Yes?
Here.
Gibson.
Here.
Bill.
Here.
Hopper.
Here.
Cash.
Here.
Lexi.
Here.
Manship.
Here.
And Mo.
Here.
Here.
Williams.
Zabbs.
We do have a forum. All of you should have received copies of the minutes, from our regular amended minutes for our meeting from September the 15th. I know, I think, at our last council meeting, we may have approved those, but since now we actually have the amended minutes, I'll take a motion to approve those.
I'm sorry. Are you...
We're asking for a motion to approve the amended minutes from September 15th.
I make that motion.
Motion by Ms. Gibson.
Sir.
Second by Mr. Lexi. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? Hearing none, then roll call on the amended minutes for September 15th.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Cash.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Manship.
Aye.
And Mo.
Aye. Minutes are approved on a vote of eight to zero. I think all of you, well, I sent you all an email today, I hope you read it, but without objection, we will not consider the minutes from October 6th or October 20th tonight. We'll do that over the next week. Anything else on the minutes?
Yes, Mr. Gibson, would this be a proper time for discussion?
Yes.
There was a motion after meeting, our last meeting, that we would do, everything would be done by the secretary, and we wouldn't have any links. I need to tell you that I've gone and listened to the YouTube, and that's something that's very, very difficult, I think, for the clerk or her assistant to do, and I just, I think it would be better if we did a link with it and then let that be the minutes, because minutes are really supposed to be brief. So, I just wondered what your discussion is on it.
I'm only making a motion last time, or suggestion, motion to evaluate and have the minutes verbatim. I'm okay with Ms. Gibson's suggestion, the dispute length, so long as it's consistent through, for each, each of the speakers to put that link. So, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay. I know at the last meeting, we did specify that that motion was just pertaining to those minutes of October, of the ones we were looking at amending. So, but this would pertain to all ongoing minutes from here on out. We would create links instead of, now is this when someone's obviously submits a written transcript? Is that what you have in mind? Or if somebody stands up and gives, you know, a speech, they take their...
Potential link, these speech, I'm up here with a link.
Okay, all right. All right, any other discussion or considerations? Is that a motion then?
It needs to be a motion, and it is.
Yeah, okay, a motion by Mr. Lexi, a second by Mr. Moon. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed? All right, passage to you then, listen. All right, reports, Corporation Council.
Nothing to report.
Legal and Controller at this time.
I don't think so, Scott.
The other committee or board reports. We've not had an RBC meeting since our last council meeting, but we do have one tomorrow, so... All right. This is an opportunity then for public comment. If you're here tonight and wish to address the council concerning items that are on tonight's agenda, please step to the podium, state your name, your name and address for the record, and there is a five-minute time limit per person or twenty-minute time limit per top. Right, seeing none, then ordinances and resolutions, notice of intent to consider, there are none. First reading, Resolution 2518.
A resolution of the City of Greenwood Common Council making a preliminary determination to issue bonds sponsored by Gibson.
Do you have a motion?
Certainly.
Motion by Ms. Gibson, second.
Sir.
Second by Mr. Lexi. This is scheduled for two public hearings, one tonight, so we will open it up for public hearing, and if you're here tonight and wish to speak for or against Resolution 2518, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Great, right, City Controller, I just wanted to point out there was documentation made available as part of the public hearing. This is part of the requirements for a control project. The first few pages show the potential impact of issuing the full amount of the nineteen million five hundred thousand. That is part of the overall bond project. However, that is not the plan, so the second two pages actually show the potential impact of the up to eight million dollar issuance that is, that was included in the budget. And so, this is part of that control project. We do need to present potential impacts as far as they relate to debt service levies and debt, debt service tax rates. And so, that's what's presented in the documentation that was made available here off with the agendas.
All right. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against Resolution 2518? Seeing none, closing public hearing. Any discussion on the council? Questions? Hearing none, then roll call, Resolution 2518, first reading.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Cash.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Manship.
Aye.
And Mo.
Aye. Resolution 2518 passes first reading, eight, zero. Ordinance number 2528.
An ordinance of the City of Greenwood authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds for the purpose of providing funds to pay for certain capital expenditure products and incidental expenses in connection therewith, and appropriating the proceeds of the bonds to such purposes to finance such capital projects sponsored by Gibson.
Do you have a motion?
Certainly.
Motion by Ms. Gibson, second.
Sir.
Second by Mr. Lexi. Any discussion on the council? Hearing none, then roll call, ordinance 2528, first reading.
Gibson.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Cash.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Manship.
Aye.
Mo.
Aye.
And Campbell.
Aye. Ordinance 2528 passes first reading, eight, zero. Resolution 2519.
A resolution of the Greenwood Common Council waiving noncompliance of Realty Income Properties LLC regarding its failure to timely file its application for deduction from assessed valuation of structures and economic revitalization areas in compliance with Statement of Benefits sponsored by Campbell and Gibson.
No motion?
Certainly.
Motion by Ms. Gibson, second.
Sir.
Second by Mr. Moon. This is scheduled for a public hearing. Open up for public hearing. If you're here tonight and wish to speak for or against Resolution 2519, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, then we'll close the public hearing. Any discussion on the council?
And everybody's coming to talk about father and pride, or...
Talk for five seconds at the last minute. It seems that it was a clerical change in personnel is what it sounded like to me, if I remember correctly.
Change of, change of ownership, ownership, and then, yeah, that's what it sounded like to me.
Yeah, still. It's been three years. Somebody's got to notice at some point that they were supposed to get this tax rebate, and they didn't. It happens all the time for whatever reason. These should be sophisticated people who know what they're doing when they buy new business. I don't know, so...
Any further discussion? Seeing none, then roll call, Resolution 2519, first reading.
Bill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Cash. Lexi.
Aye.
Manship.
Aye.
Mo.
Aye.
Campbell.
Nick.
Gibson.
Did we not tell those people that they took me to...
I don't think so.
Yes.
Resolution 2519 fails to pass on a vote of three to five. Second reading, ordinance number 2526.
An ordinance to establish designated outdoor, a designated outdoor refreshment area in the City of Greenwood, Indiana sponsored by Bill.
No motion? Sorry, motion by Mr. Lexi, second.
Certainly.
Second by Ms. Cash. Any discussion on the council? I do have something to say. I sent you all an email today. I'd just like to read that. Said I wanted to share why I'm voting no on ordinance 2526. While I appreciate the intent to create a designated outdoor refreshment area, I believe the concept poses more risks than benefits for our community. My concerns include increased enforcement demands on police and public safety personnel, greater risk of public intoxication, nuisance behavior, and violations of Dora boundaries, potential negative impact on non-alcoholic related businesses and family oriented environments, added administrative and financial burdens for signage, enforcement, and cleanup, possible conflicts with nearby residential areas, churches, and schools, liability and compliance challenges under state alcohol laws. Enforcement would in practice rely on those who directly profit from alcohol sales. For example, there's no practical way to verify how much alcohol is poured into each cup. I can see a hokey pokey moment as a patron approaches the boundary, one foot in, one foot out. Meanwhile, all costs for signage, cleanup, and enforcement would fall on the city, which as we've learned, is facing extreme financial restrictions. Even though the city receives no direct revenue from the, from Dora, at minimum, these costs should be borne by the participating businesses that benefit from the program. I also believe the proposed hours for Dora are excessive, and I included a list of other cities that have, and their Dora hours for comparison. Our recommendations would be to shorten the permitted hours of operations similar to what they have in Carville or Evansville. Establish an application fee or require participating businesses to cover signage, cleanup, and public education costs. Consider implementing a short-term pilot program lasting a few weeks or months, and if not a pilot program, include a sunset clause or clear evaluation metrics to measure, or to reassess the program after one year. Ultimately, Dora expands an actual, an activity normally restricted to twenty-one and older, to twenty-one and older establishments into a public spaces accessible to all ages. I do not believe this is in the best interest of our family-friendly community, and I appreciate your consideration. Any other comments or questions?
I guess I could use a pilot program already. If there are problems, we can adjust the program or renew it entirely.
I would say invited, invited these comments, a twelve to twelve, seven-day-a-week policy does, in my opinion, seem excessive to allow for that. And I noticed, I spent some time looking at some of the other time slots from other communities that have this. It seems like they limit the hours during weekdays. Some even, you know, kind of reopen back up in the, in the summer months. But I think just a carte blanche, twelve, noon to midnight, may lead itself to some noise issues, you know. I think the, the idea of this kind of, kind of community environment on its face is pretty good, but I do think that it could turn itself to some additional issues.
Any other comments?
Rob, are you in charge of this thing? Yes, no?
I have to get four of them.
Yeah. So, the noon to midnight, does that encompass like Way and Fest, Freedom Fest? Does it catch those hours? Is that why it's... Yeah.
Those would be on weekends, wouldn't they?
Yes.
So, restricting hours during weekdays is not effective.
Yeah. All right. So, the festivals then would require a, the special permitting, is that right? Or are those special events included in this ordinance? Because there are some permittees that are listed in the ordinance. Are events required, the special permits?
We would still have to get a permit for the sale of alcohol for the events.
Right.
We just wouldn't have to go to the major research hours.
The other question I have, I told somebody I'd ask it, Our Lady. They can be a temporary vendor right for Freedom Fest or Way and Fest. That way folks can buy their beer at Our Lady and walk through Craig Park wherever they need to go, right?
That's fine.
Yeah. That's what they wanted, so I just wanted to make sure. Yeah.
Right, any other comments or questions?
Yes. I would like to propose to, to weekday hours of this ordinance. Now is the appropriate time?
Monday through Thursday or for a...
I'd say... So, you're also getting into maybe like a St. Patrick's Day, which could be great to take throughout the week, right? Or is it always on a Wednesday? I can't remember exactly what. It's around seventeen every year, okay? We'd lend itself to...
Always free to amend it if it can. In practice, it's a...
That's a problem. A lot of Dave's comments. You know, it's kind of, it's kind of a private, everything we do here is private. They can always...
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, then roll call, second reading, ordinance 2526.
Hopper.
Aye.
Cash.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Manship.
Aye.
Mo.
Nick.
Campbell.
Nick.
Gibson.
May.
And Bill.
Aye. Ordinance 2526 passes on a vote of five to three. Resolution 2516.
A resolution of the Greenwood Common Council waiving noncompliance of Visionware LLC regarding its failure to timely file its application for deduction from assessed valuation of structures and economic revitalization area in compliance with the Statement of Benefits.
Do you have a motion?
Somebody...
Motion by Mr. Lexi, second.
Sir.
Second by Mr. Moon. Oh, sorry, Mr. Hopper, sorry. Any additions? Or, sorry. Any discussion on the council, questions?
I will say that the representative for Visionware, he's Dr. Browning. They characterized the earlier...
It's a small business. Easy to lose paperwork.
This is probably, it's real, it's the limit of his real estate M.R.
Yeah.
I've got to sit with the... You lose a good bookkeeper, you lose a lot.
Yep. So, any other discussion? Anything you'd like to say, or you're there to answer questions?
I'm merely here to travel for your mercy. So, yes, David Hall's a great people. Simon Spitzer's a fantastic guy.
Would you say, please?
My name's Chris Browning. My address is 287 South St. Edward, 135.
All right, any other questions, comments? All right, hearing none, then roll call, Resolution 2516, second reading.
Cash.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Manship.
Aye.
Mo.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
And Mo.
Aye. Resolution 2516 passes second reading, eight, zero. Resolution 2517.
A resolution of the Greenwood Common Council proving an interlocal cooperation agreement between the City of Greenwood and the town of Whiteman regarding certain road improvements on South Emerson Avenue.
I have a motion. Motion by Mr. Hopper, second. Second by Mr. Moon. Any discussion, questions? Hearing none, then roll call, Resolution 2517, second reading.
Lexi.
Aye.
Manship.
Aye.
Mo.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
And Cash.
Aye.
Resolution 2517 passes second reading, eight, zero. New business introduction to the new ordinance is the resolutions, ordinance number 2529.
An ordinance providing for additional appropriations to the sponsor fund to budget classifications 423 in the amount of $20,333, and 436, the amount of $18,601 for repairs and maintenance sponsored by Mo.
Good evening, Council, Jane Washington Fire Chief. This year, we had significant equipment repair costs incurred. While we've done a good job of doing what we can to lessen that blow. We're in a position now, but we're going to need a little extra funding. We had some different repairs, equipment such as new, a new engine, a new transmission for a ladder truck, reserve ladder truck. Amongst other things, we incurred a significant self-containment rear end damage this year. So, just with those two, we're talking about $120,000 of unexpected costs and repairs.
Any questions for the chief?
All right. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Resolution 2520.
A resolution of the Greenwood Common Council authorizing the filing, acceptance, and implementation of Brownfield Field Assessment Grant with the United States Environmental Protection Agency sponsored by Campbell.
Hello. Hi, Council. The city was notified by the EPA that we were approved to receive a half a million dollars in grant funds. This grant does not require a match in the City of Greenwood. This is a brownfield assessment grant that we applied for in 2024. And with this, I would request, if you were in favor, that we suspend the multiple meetings to expedite the resolution so that we can begin working on the grant and the RBC. It is a four-year grant, and it is October 1st through September 3rd, 2029. So, it's now November, so we missed that first month. So, I'd appreciate it if we could suspend the multiple meetings.
Are there any questions for Mr. Nelson?
I can tell what the grant might spend huge for.
Yes, I can, and we'll have to work with private landowners as well. But this is an assessment grant, so it is doing a lot of environmental planning work. It's not going to actually be construction work that we're doing. With this grant, we'll be able to do phase one environmental site assessments and phase two environmental site assessments. I think in our board plan, we have a potential working to phase one environmental site assessments and ten phase two. With that, it helps private developments come in when this work is done to something that can kickstart a brownfield, which is basically a piece of property that may or may not have potential, the presence of hazardous substances. Substan... Can't speak. Can't speak tonight, but hazardous substances. So, a lot of this research would be required. So, this is a way the city can come in and start to... Start to prepare these sites.
So, it helps mitigate environmental hazards on potential sites. It's in its way, the city has been partnered with projects. Is that, is my understanding of that correct?
That would be correct. We do remediation, work plans. There could be vision sessions on how do we use a piece of property to actually be zap breaking. There could be market studies done for some of these sites. It would include public outreach. It would include profiles for these properties. So, a lot of this is things that are barriers for, we felt, in our re-investments. So, you typically see a pretty good return on your dollar.
Thanks to that.
Mr. President, if I do it for suspension of the rules for first reading.
So, I have a motion by Ms. Gibson for suspension, a second by Mr. Lexi. Any discussion on suspensions? Hearing none, then roll call, suspension of the rules, the first reading of Resolution 2520.
Manship.
Aye.
Mo.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
And Lexi.
Aye.
Rules are suspended, your first reading on a vote of eight to zero. We have a motion on first reading. Motion by Ms. Gibson, second. Second by Mr. Lexi. Any discussion? Hearing none, then roll call, Resolution 2520, first reading.
Mo.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Cash.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
And Manship.
Aye.
Resolution 2520 passes first reading, eight, zero. We have a motion for suspension through second reading.
Certainly.
Motion by Mr. Lexi, second. By Ms. Gibson. Any discussion? Hearing none, then roll call, suspension of the rules through second reading of ordinance 2520.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Cash.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Manship.
Aye.
And Mo.
Aye. Rules are suspended on a vote of eight to zero. We have a motion for second reading. So, motion by Mr. Hopper, second.
Sir.
Second by Mr. Lexi. Any discussion? Just...
A question. Eighteen sites. But potential for eighteen that we could do. Did we get a list of where those are at? I'm just curious. Or what, you're running your house. Yeah. Yeah, we do have a list, I know. I can send you the census tracts, the blocks of where those would be in a lot of, more of a general area right now. Thank you.
All right, any further discussion, questions? Hearing none, then roll call, ordinance 2520, second reading.
Gibson.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye. Aye.
Cash.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Manship.
Aye.
Moon.
Aye.
Aye. Resolution twenty-five twenty passes second reading eight zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Missed ladies business, this is the second opportunity for members of the public to address the council. This time concerning items that are not on tonight's agenda. If you'd like to do so, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and again, there's a five-minute time limit per person and a twenty-minute time limit per topic. All right, any missed ladies business from the council? Any from the Corporation Council?
None.
Controller at this time? From Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, believe it or not.
Ah. All right, welcome. Nice to meet you. All right, anything else, and not we are adjourned.